Sorry, once again, good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining this evening for our Tuesday Bible discussion, where we will have our facilitator, Brother Stephen Grenell, to lead this evening's Bible class as we continue to look at the subject of Lost, a case study. I truly hope that God has been blessing you since we last met Sunday till now and that we are in good faith, good standing. And if not, we pray and hope that we will be better throughout this time. We'll sing a few choruses, our songs, after which we will have a word of prayer. And then Brother Stephen will lead this evening's Bible discussion. I once was lost in sin, but Jesus took me in. And then a little light from heaven filled my soul. It bathed my heart in love and wrote my name above. And just a little talk with the Father made me, oh, he made me. Oh, now let us have a little talk with the Father. Let us tell him all about our troubles. He will hear our faintest cry and he will answer by and by. Now, when you feel a little prideful yearning as your heart unto heaven is turning, you will find a little talk with the Father makes it right, it makes it right. Now let us have a little talk with the Father. Let us tell him all about our troubles. He will hear our faintest cry and he will answer by and by. Now, when you feel a little prideful yearning as your heart unto heaven is turning, you will find a little talk with the Father makes it right.
You thank your God for friends and bring before your God at this time our young people who may be facing one challenge or another. O dear God, may you help us to constantly look to you and may they, oh God, lean on your everlasting arms. Father, we pray for Stephen as he has prepared himself to share with us from your words this evening. May we listen attentively. May we, oh God, seek with your help to make all the necessary applications to our lives. O dear God, we pray for those who are sick. We beg your God to lift them up. And God, may you guide them. We also pro God for the outcome of the election in the United States. May God the result will be accepted by all that is concerned. Pro God that everything will, in the end, be peaceful. Father, we pray for church that will be a group that truly care for each other, love each other, and willing, oh God, to even forgive each other when we sin against each other. Father, at this point, we beg you for your forgiveness. May you give us the strength we need to continue to endure. Help us, oh God, not to give up when things are difficult. Help us, oh God, to endure hardship. Help us, Father, as a church, to endure sound doctrine. Father God, may we learn the lessons of endurance through athletes and good soldiers and father from the farmer. May we, oh God, keep the message that we have heard from time to time in our hearts, that you will be resolute and determined to make it to the very end. Guide us now as we tell your thanks in Jesus' name. Amen.
At this time, we will hand over our service, our presentation, at this time to our Bible class instructor, Brother Stephen Grenell.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, we are here, Leo.
Good evening to everyone that is signed in and welcome to our Bible class. I know some individuals, whether it be due to responsibilities in teaching other Bible classes or just other circumstances, weren't with us on Sunday. So, good to see all those who are here now. For those who were here on Sunday, good to see you again. And I hope that we're all in the mindset this afternoon, or this evening, rather, to do some Bible study, to learn from God's Word. All right, so for those who weren't here on Sunday or those who are just tuning into Bible class for the first time or in a while, we have been following the title study of Lost, a Case Study. And what we have been doing in this study is we've been looking at the book of Luke, specifically chapter 15, and more specifically, the parable of the lost thing. So, the parable of the lost son, the lost coin, and the lost sheep. And we've been doing a three-pronged approach in regards to this study, where we've been looking at diagnosis, where we try and identify what in this, what are the problems that the characters in these parables face. We've been looking at correlation, how these problems affect us individually. And then we've been looking at prescription. What can we do, having identified these issues, to prevent them from occurring, if they haven't occurred as yet, or to treat them, if they are currently issues that we are facing? And we started looking at the lost sheep. Have identified two disorders, for want of a better word. Since we started, we looked at scatterbrain syndrome in its entirety. And we have been spending the past few weeks looking at what we call the bark bug. And the bark bug speaks to doubt and worry that plagues the Christian as a result of an incapability on one's part to see beyond one's own perception and judgment or beyond one's own capabilities. So that is what we have been looking at. We looked at the diagnosis, we looked at correlation. And we have been spending, for the past two classes, we've been looking at some scriptures that speak to helping us identify prescriptive methods. So we've been looking at some pills so as to aid us in this process. The first one that we looked at was the pill of present tense. And the one that we are currently looking at is the pill of past providence. So we looked at the pill of present tense. We're now looking at the pill of past providence. And we looked through a few Psalms. We looked at Psalm chapter 40, we looked at Psalm 138. And on last week, we concluded Psalm 138 and we got into Psalm 116. So that is where we're going to continue. We went through verse one and two. We're going to do a short recap on what we've covered in those verses thus far. And then we're going to jump back into where we left off. So I'm just asking for two readers. If you can, just raise your hand. We're going to read over the first. All right, so Natasha, you are yellow. And Sister Paula, you are green. So Sister Natasha, you can go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good evening, everyone. All right. I love the Lord because he has heard my voice and my supplications. Because he has inclined his ear to me, therefore I will call upon him as long as I live. The pains of death surround me and the pangs of sheol laid hold of me. I found trouble and sorrow. Then I called upon the name of the Lord. Oh, Lord, I implore you, deliver my soul.
Gracious is the Lord and righteousness. Yes, our God is merciful. The Lord preserved this simple. I was brought low and he saved me. Return to your rest, oh my soul, for the Lord has dealt wonderfully with you. For you have delivered my soul from death, my eyes from tears, and my feet from falling.
All right, thank you. Well read, Natasha. And Sister Paula. So we started, so this is the Psalm that we're looking at. And for those who need a recap, the pill of past providence, which is what we're looking at now, is a means to overcome our doubt and worry by looking back at what God has done for us, looking back at some of the things that God has brought us through, and using that as encouragement when we face our current trials and struggles. So the idea is to forge these memories, these memories of these things God has done so stably in our minds that whenever we see something similar in the future or in the present, the first thing that will come to mind is God's ability to carry us through and recognition of God having carried us through something similar already. So we wouldn't have reason to doubt, wouldn't have reason to worry because we have encouragement of God's past providence. So Psalm chapter 116, as I said, we looked at verse one and two on Sunday. So we're just going to quickly recap that and then we're going to get into where we left off. So, "I love the Lord because he has heard my voice and my supplications." Love here, meaning to have affection for. And we found it to be specific of human love for God or human love to God. So either it is a feeling that one has or it is an affection that one shows. But both of them are specific to humans having it for God. We looked at because, and we saw that because is a conjunction. Conjunction links words or groups of words. And the conjunction because here is saying that for this reason, since, or the fact that. So David is saying that he loved the Lord for this particular reason, the reason that he goes on to state. And he says, "Because he has heard my voice and my supplication." We saw here that heard mean to hear intelligent, intelligently, sorry. And it has the implication of hearing with attention or with interest. And we've seen in most of the Psalms thus far, this is a word that David uses very regularly when speaking to God. When God hears, we recognize that God hears with intention to show attention or having an interest to hear. So God doesn't just merely hear what we have to say. He hears with intent to do something. And we saw here David specifying both voice and supplication, indicating that God listens to us when we need someone to listen to him. And he also listens to us, I mean, when we need someone to listen to us. And he also listens to us when we need something from him or need some assistance. We jumped to verse two. And it says, "Because he has inclined his ear to me, therefore I will call upon him as long as I live." We see because again here, which is indicating that this action is based on what preceded. So David loving the Lord, which is what he had said initially, is also based on the fact that God has inclined his ear to him. And inclined here meaning to stretch or spread out, to bend, to extend. And this is another one of those verbs that we see David using relatively frequently in the Psalms to show God's willingness to incline himself, to lower himself to man. He uses ear here as an organ of hearing to show that him inclining his ear here is specific of willingness to listen. Therefore being used as for this reason. So because God has inclined his ear to me, because God has heard my supplications and my voice, I will call, being to call out and meaning to address by name. And we saw that, having recognized all these things, having accepted that God is somebody who listens to us and listens to help us, that he inclines his ear and lowers himself to hear us, that David's decision to call upon him as long as he lives is a wise and prudent one. Why wouldn't I call upon someone who takes the time to listen to me and makes the effort to give me what I need? And now, we pick up where we left off with verse three. Providing there are no questions or queries or clarifications required from last week, that from Sunday, sorry, that weren't covered. Can raise your hand if you have any. One, two, three. All right, no queries. All right, so moving on. "The pains of death surrounded me and the pangs of sheol laid hold of me. I found trouble and sorrow." So after David starts the passage with essentially cause and effect, establishing what he's doing and why he's doing it, he now gets into some descriptions of the situations that he faced. We're not entirely sure how this is linked to what he said initially, but given how David writes, we will see the link shortly. So he said, "The pains of death surrounded me." The word pain, pains as used there, it's shebel, it's a noun, and it speaks to a rope. It's used as twisted, so meaning when a rope is twisted around something else. And by implication, it speaks to a noose. So when you see the pains here, think of the idea of a rope being used as a noose. Figuratively speaking, it means a throw, which is a pang or a spasm or also can mean a painful struggle. So figuratively speaking, the pain here, when you see the pains of death, the word pains here speaks to a pang or a spasm or a painful struggle. And the literal, literal idea that is being drawn up is the idea of a noose. And for us, all of us who knows what a noose is used for, primarily, it was used as a form of, I guess, one of the forms was, if you're on death row, one of the ways that people were killed was from hanging. And the noose would be drawn around your neck until there is no more life. Essentially, it would be a death by suffocation. This is the idea that David wants to, wants the kind of pain that he is trying to provide the imagery for, is the idea of a rope around your neck suffocating you. And whilst we may not have gone through this literal experience, I'm sure that for all of us, we have had periods in our lives when we have gone through things that feel suffocating, almost as though the situation is robbing us of our breath, whether it be through literal pain or through emotional distress, mental discord, a situation that seems as if it cannot be solved. But the idea of a noose twisting around our neck, I'm sure, figuratively speaking, is not lost on us. And that is what David wants to paint in the use of these pains, a rope tightening. And we're going to see, we're going to see this tightening metaphor and analogy being used consistently through this particular Psalm. So keep that in mind. Death here speaks to natural or violent death. So death as a result of you passing on or death passing on due to old age, etc., sickness, death of natural causes, and then violent death in the sense of somebody taking the life of someone else. So it essentially speaks to passing away. And the figurative meaning here is pestilence. And pestilence can mean disease or destruction or ruin. And based on the usage here, it can be either destruction or ruin. Ruin, that is used figuratively here. So essentially, what David was saying is that destruction or ruin was like a rope or the idea of destruction or ruin, the pain of destruction or ruin was like a rope around his neck, robbing him of breath. And then he says, "And the pangs of sheol laid hold of me." Similar to pains, pangs here, mitzah, means something tight. So we know that pains means a rope, i.e. a noose. And we know that it is used to tighten to the point where one loses their ability to breathe. Pangs here means similarly something tight. Figuratively, it means trouble, distress, and pain. So we see where the idea of pain, the idea of trouble, the idea of distress is likened to something squeezing, something pressing against to the point where it is a tight situation. And i.e. the idea of saying being in a tight spot stems from that same description. Sheol here speaks to Hades, the grave, hell, or the pit. So we know David, the type of writer that David is, he's very expressive with his language. So he's, he literally is likening the situation that he's going through to. And mind you, we know from David's experiences, some of these may not be as figurative as they may be in our life. A lot of situations that David was in, death was literally next door to him. So this can be him using it figuratively and it could be him speaking literally the situations where he felt like he was about to die. But that doesn't mean that we can't relate. I'm sure even if we haven't been in near-death situations, we have felt trouble, we have felt distress, we have felt pains that feel as though they are suffocating us. So we can empathize with what David is trying to share with us here. So he says, "The pains of death surrounded me and the pangs of sheol laid hold of me. I found trouble and sorrow." The word found here comes from the word matzah and it means to come forth, i.e. appear or exist. So where David says, "I found trouble and sorrow", don't think of it as David went looking for it. And then he said, "Okay, eureka, here is trouble and sorrow, I found you." No, it gives the idea of trouble and sorrow suddenly appearing, trouble and sorrow consistently existing in his environment. So it gives the idea of sudden, unexpected trouble and sorrow as well as overwhelmingly present trouble and sorrow. And in both circumstances, they are, both of them are very difficult to deal with. When trouble comes unexpectedly, there is no time to mentally prepare. Sudden loss of life in the family, sudden terminal illness like cancer, childbirth, death where the child is being born or significant disability to the child, those are troubles that appear out of nowhere. You think everything is going okay and then bam, a massive, massive trial that more often than not doesn't last for a short period of time but stays for an extended period. And it's not an easy burden to bear. A lot of the times, a lot of the mental damage that is done is as a result of one not having been able to prepare. You have a family member that is steadily struggling with illness for an extended period of time. Mind you, that is a trouble and a sorrow in and of itself. But when that person passes, more often than not, it's a little easier to stomach because over time, you got used to the idea that this is eventually going to come. But when trouble pops up and sorrow pops up out of nowhere, it can be difficult to deal with. And figuratively, the found here means to occur, to meet, or be present. Trouble, once again here, the word means tightness. So we're seeing the consistency in the language that David is using, trying to portray this idea of suffocation, of things reaching a point where it is so compressed that it is difficult to escape. Figuratively, it means trouble. And it can also mean, and I found this one extremely interesting, a rival wife slash a vexed woman. And I'm not going to get myself in trouble this evening, but I am sure we all, whether we are in significant relationships or not, can think of the kind of trouble that can be caused by a rival wife or a vexed woman. It says that, well, there's a statement that hell knows no fury like a woman scorn. I believe that's the correct phrasing of that statement. But think of, think of the kind of trouble you would be in if your wife or significant other found out about a rival woman.
What is a rival wife? I'm a little innocent. I don't quite understand that concept.
All right, so my presumption, especially given that the time where David, that David lived in, polygamy was acceptable. So David, as a king, was capable of having more than one wife. So a rival wife at that time would be the wife, another wife who is vying for the affection for the, I don't know, possessions or entitlements that are supposedly for the first wife. So in those days, the first wife would have the, would have the greater significance, for want of a better, and the wives that follow afterwards would be of lesser significance. And if the rival wife essentially would be the wife who is now contesting for that initial, for that position. She wants to be top wife, she wants to be head wife. And the idea here is that that wife is trouble, not only for the top wife, but for the husband himself. And then, of course, the more generic idea is a vexed woman. And I don't know if the media is anything to go by, but a vexed man will do wicked. But more often than not, a vexed woman is But more often than not, a vexed woman is more crafty in how she carries out the wickedness. Um, you can, you can raise your hand if you disagree with me. But from what I have seen and the little I have heard in my short lifespan. When a woman is vexed, the length to which she will go to express said vexation. Usually extends beyond that of a man and usually provides greater trouble for the. The um, the individual who said vexation is directed at. Um ladies, that, that sound valid? I know that there are no vexed women in here. But if you have a vexed friend, you can say that this is the case, you know, let me leave this one alone. But I'm hoping that we have Brother Smith, I don't know if that gives you a better explanation as to what a rival wife is.
Thank you, sir, and, and a little innocent here, sir, I'm not sure.
Understandable, don't worry, as, as were, as was I before studying this subject. But I guess I have more reason to be innocent than you.
Okay, so.
Seeing as I have no wife.
Only vexed woman that I have met would be my mother, I suppose.
Boy, I'm not going down that road, did you? Alright, so Kirk says it helps to recall David's conflicts with Saul and his son and him constantly calling on God for deliverance. Alright, um sorrow here. Yagone, or Yagoan, however that is pronounced, means affliction of the heart. And it speaks to grief, sorrow and anguish. So whereas trouble seems to be from an external situation pressing down. The word sorrow here speaks more to the internal struggles, so grief, sorrow, anguish. And David is saying that this is all that he saw around him, this is what existed, this is what came forth. Let's see why that is significant, moving to verse four. He says, then I called upon the name of the Lord, oh Lord, I implore you, deliver my soul. So David said that the pains of death were around him, the pangs of sheol tried to lay hold of him. All he found was sorrow and trouble. And what is David's response? He said, then I called upon the name of the Lord, oh Lord, I implore you, deliver my soul. More English, the word then here is an adverb. And I had told you, just like therefore, then is a conjunctive adverb. And what it is doing, it is linking an idea or a statement. It previously made with a statement that is following. And how it is linking in this case, it is, it is letting you know that at that time. So at that time, when this thing happened, this thing happened. So when David was surrounded by sorrow and trouble. When the pangs of sheol and the pains of death were around him, this is what happened. And what happened is that he called upon the name of the Lord. And this is important for us to pay attention to. Then means at that time. When we are at our then, when we are at that time. When we are surrounded by trouble and sorrow, when we feel like there is a noose around our neck. When we feel like we are pressed down and we are in a tight spot. Is our response at that time to call upon the name of the Lord? Cause that is what David is trying to, to share with us. To let us know that, guess what, you see when this was my circumstance, you see when this was my situation, this was my response. I'm going to call upon the name of the Lord and that's encouragement to us to not um. To not go down every other road, to not go through every other means. And then when all of them fail or it seemed to be failing, we proceed to call upon the name of the Lord. The best time to do so is at that time, at that time when this trouble and the sorrow appears. At that time when we are surrounded, at that time when we feel the pressure, don't wait until after. Now is the best time to call upon the name of the Lord. Lord here means, I believe that's Jehovah, noun, and it means the self-existent. Or eternal, the self-existent or eternal. And Jeho- it also means Jehovah, the proper name of the one true God. And if it's the, the call that is used here, where it says, then I called. It's the same call that we looked at in the first verse that speaks to using the proper name. So when David says he calls upon the name of the Lord, the Lord that is called out here when he says, oh Lord, is the proper name of God. And that speaks to the kind of relationship that David has with God. And also the kind of relationship that we have with God. Because we are his children, we can call his proper name when we call out to him. And that speaks to the bond that we have with God. And also it speaks to the promises that God has made as our father. The father is responsible for protection, for provision of his children. And God has told us in numerous scriptures, in numerous circumstances. What he will do when we need him and what we need to do to get his attention. And David is reinforcing that exact process by letting us know what he does in those circumstances. We need to remember when we are going through our struggles and our troubles and our, our problems. That God is our father and father here in the sense of parent. That he wants to take care of us, that he is capable of taking care of us. Sometimes we're a little too self-sufficient when we're going through our struggles. I remember when I was, when I was younger, there are certain problems that you'd even think about it two times. His mom and dad need to sort this out. You, you, you lost, you, you, you need, you need lunch money. You, when I was younger, your clothes needed to press, or mind you, that never lasted long, cause mom did have me pan the iron early. But at a particular stage, your clothes need to wash, your clothes need to iron, these were never your concerns. These were your parents' concerns and sometimes as Christians, we get a little too self-reliant. Not saying that we don't have a part to play or a role to play. But it's almost like when the problems arise, when the struggles arise, when the troubles arise, we play. I'm going to sort it out, I'm going to fix it, I'm going to do it on my own. Until we batter, 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 realize that it's not working out and then we ball out to God. When the situation is, is fifty times worse than when it initially arrived. We need to remember God like, or we would remember our parents when we depended on them. We're, we're not even thinking about, not even thinking about how we are going to solve this, this is one for God. This is a, God, alright, I'm leaving this in your lap. Help me and we need to, we need to get back to that kind of dependency. And please note, that kind of dependency is not a, I don't do anything, God is my genie kind of dependency. That kind of dependency is a recognizing the role of me as a Christian. In looking to God. Recognizing that there are certain things that. Having understood who God is and what he requires of me. That I am not going to allow this to become something that I worry about. I'm not going to allow this to become something that I'm anxious about because God has already promised to me that he's going to sort this out. So David calls on God in his tight spot. What does he say? He says, I implore you, deliver my soul. The word implore here, anna, is an interjection and an interjection for us, English. Well, we're all English speakers, an interjection is essentially an exclamation. Grammatically speaking, it doesn't affect the rest of the sentence. More often than not, it is um separated from the sentence with an exclamation mark or a comma. But in this, given that this is English, having translated Hebrew, it is going to be phrased in the sentence a li- little differently. So although as we read this, it reads as a verb, I implore you, think of it more as an exclamation. Think of it almost like David, this is David making a cry. The implo- imploring here is a cry out. And the cry out is essentially saying, I beseech thee. And beseech means to beg for urgently or anxiously. So to beg for with urgency, to beg for anxiously. There's a, there's a desperate need for God's attention, for God's intervention. And once again, we see where David is showing reliance. He recognizes the seriousness of the situation. He recognizes that God is the one that can fix things. And as such, he beseeches God because he knows that outside of this avenue, there is no, there is no fix. Sometimes the reason we don't beseech God, the reason we're not urgent in our beseeching. Is because we in our heads have multiple avenues in which we can sort out our troubles and our struggles. And the beseeching only comes when those avenues burn up. So when it's only one path we see into this being fixed and it is God, that is when we're down on our knees, begging and praying and saying, Lord, save me, Lord, help me. But when we think that we can get it solved through multiple means and multiple mediums, more often than not. Even if we do approach God before we have exhausted all our means. The way in which we approach God is usually a little less emphatic. Because it's almost like we're saying, well, if God wants to sort out this one, then sure, if not, I have plan B through Z. David, on the other hand, recognizes the, his need for God. To deliver him in this circumstance and as such puts out his entirety, his entire effort. Give, imagine you're on, you're on a deserted island. Have been on the deserted island for an extended period of time, you don't know where help is coming from. And all of a sudden you see a, a ship or a boat passing relatively close. To your island. Are you going to say, hey, hello, can you hear me? Or are you going to, I don't like saying ball out because of the, the connotation that it has garnered through music. But are you going to ball out, scream, roar, run in the water, make up as much noise as you can? Because as far as you're concerned, this is your avenue for escape. This is the rescuer, you're not thinking about tomorrow, you're not thinking about next week. You don't know if or when somebody else might come. You are going to exhaust everything in trying to get the attention of that boat. That is the person that can save you. If we transfer that mentality to God when we are in our struggles. If we see God as that boat, as the one who saves us. And if we also have the reassurance that if we beseech him, then he will come to our rescue. Then how much more emphatic would our imploring of God be? So David beseeched God and his request was for him to deliver his soul. The word deliver means malat, it's a verb and it means to be smooth. I E. to escape as if by slipperiness. So to be smooth to the point where you can escape almost as if because you are slippery. And causatively, meaning when it is being done by someone, it means to release or to rescue. Essentially, it gives the idea of to make slippery so one can escape. And there are a lot of animals that, that is the means by which they escape their predators. Whether it be through some secretion in their body or their reaction to. Particular liquids like water, certain animals in water, it makes them slippery so that when predators try to eat them. Or try to attack them, because they are so slippery, it is difficult for them to get a hold of them. And then as a result, the animal escapes. One of the things that this escape speaks to. Is that when something escapes by slipperiness, it comes into contact with what is trying to destroy it. So when something escapes or is delivered in this manner, in this slipperiness manner. It comes into contact with what is trying to either imprison it. Or to, to destroy it. And this now speaks to firstly, God's ability. To deliver even when destruction seems imminent. So God can save right out of the hands of destruction, no matter how close it is. No matter how tangible it feels, God can allow us to slip right through. The hands of whatever it is that seems to have its claws on us. And if you notice the relation between the descriptions that are used by David in regards to his trouble, the tightness. A rope around the neck, how would one escape a rope around the neck? By slipping through, so that is the kind of delivery that David is talking about. No matter how tight the situation may seem, God has the ability to allow us to slip through that situation. Don't, don't feel that boy is too big for God, that it's, it's, it's too great. That too much has happened already for there to be deliverance. God has the capability to allow us to escape, to release us, to rescue us. Even as the trouble pressed down, pressed down upon us. And another aspect of this delivery that we need to recognize personally. Is that sometimes we're not going to escape until the situation presses down upon us. But sometimes one of the reasons why we're not particularly pleased with God is because we don't want any tightness at all. We don't want to feel oppressed, we don't want to feel surrounded by trouble, we don't want to go through sorrow. We want the absence of that, we don't want to escape by slipperiness, we want to escape by not having been brought into contact with anything at all. And that's not how God works. There are times when God will remove situations from our path enti- entirely. But there are also times when we're going to have to go through things, we're going to have to feel the trouble. We're going to have to experience the sorrow, we're going to have to feel the tight rope around our necks. Sometimes for longer than we're comfortable with. But in spite of, of all that, God still can deliver in those circumstances. We have to trust him, we have to do like David. And rather than trying to take off the noose ourselves through our own means, rather than worrying ourselves to death as we are surrounded by these situations, rather than doubting in God's ability to take us through, we need to implore God, we need to beseech God with urgency. Let him know that I want deliverance. I'm not saying that you must suffer through this thing silently and be like, okay, this is what God wants. Beseech God, just like Paul did. We say three times he asked for it to be removed and what was God's response? My grace is sufficient. Sometimes that is the slipperiness, that it won't kill us. It will be tight, but it won't, it won't suffocate us. Sometimes that is the rescue, sometimes that is the release. We have to be willing to trust God to provide that avenue. A lot of the times, our anxiety, our doubt, our worry comes when we are pressed. So we are good when we can see the trouble from a distance. We're good when the trouble comes a little closer and we can hear it. We're good when the trouble knocks on the door, but it's on the outside. Sometimes we even good when the trouble comes inside the house and it's sitting down on the couch. But the minute that trouble gets up close and personal, the minute that trouble wraps its arms around us and starts to squeeze, that is now when we are uncomfortable and we can't wait on God anymore. This is where now I have to take matters into my own hands. And sadly, more often than not, those actions aren't to call upon God. And I'm sure we can attest to having made situations that we've gone through much worse as a result of the lack of calling out to God, the lack of trusting in God. So David reminds us that when we are in these circumstances, when we are struggling, then this is when we need to call out to God. David says, Joseph slipping out of his coat and escaping from Potiphar's wife. E- excellent example, excellent example, to the slipperiness of escape. Verse five. Oh, any questions or queries? Um, and I, I feel like I'm talking a lot, I want to make sure that I'm not losing anybody. If anybody's lost, now is the time to say so. If I'm going too quickly, if you want me to to re- repeat anything else, then please let me know now. If not, then we will continue full steam ahead. Three seconds, one, two, three. All right, wonderful. I hope that my voice is not too monotonous. Gracious is the Lord and righteous, yes, or God is merciful. So David, if we're following the flow of this Psalm, David speaks to why he loves God in verse one and two and brings up some of the characteristics of God. In verse three, he speaks to the struggles that he was going through. Verse four, he speaks to his response to those struggles. So he said that he called out on God and asked him to deliver him. So we haven't, we don't know what God's response is as yet, based on David's statement. We just know that David called out to God and asked him to deliver him. So now David starts to give some of the characteristics of God. And we can see this as reinforcing his reasons or his belief as to why he will call out to God. The first description we see is gracious. So it says gracious is the Lord. And gracious, Shawn one, I, I don't know, that's sound like a butchered Hebrew there, but it's an adjective. And big surprise, it means gracious. More specifically, it means having or showing grace, giving where undeserved or unearned. So when David describes God as gracious, he is saying that God has and that God shows grace. And this grace, having or showing grace, speaks to giving where it is undeserved or unearned. So God is a God who gives to those who do not deserve and gives to those who have not earned. And that is very important, a very important characteristic of a deliverer or of a provider. Why do you say that, Stephen? Because it removes one of the big criteria that we usually use when asking for help. Which is, do I deserve the help or have I earned the help? A lot of the times when we are going through situations, those are criteria that we use to determine who we will go to for assistance. If it is someone who believes that we deserve their assistance and we believe that that is the case, then we're usually more inclined to go to them. If it is somebody that we feel we have earned the assistance from, then we are more inclined to go to them. But if it, God forbid, if it's on the other side, where I don't deserve their assistance or I have not earned it, more often than not, we are disinclined to go to those people for assistance. Here, God is, here David is reenfo- is, is sharing with us that God gives when one doesn't deserve, that God gives when one doesn't earn. So if you are struggling and you believe you're undeserving, if you are struggling and you believe that you have not earned an escape, don't worry, because God is the kind of God who gives to those who don't deserve. God is the kind of God who gives to those who have not earned. And that is powerful, that is powerful. Because I know in most of my struggles, and I know that all of us are undeserving of God's grace, but in most of my struggles, I am particularly undeserving. Most of them are self-created, most of them I have returned to by choice. This is not a court of God, this is me walking into my sin, walking into my struggles. And if I had to feel like I deserved it, if I had to feel like I earned it, the last person that I would call to is God. Because I know, I don't deserve this. How, how can I deserve your deliverance? When the very thing that you delivered me from, I just jump back into it. Imagine, y- you walk past somebody in quicksand, they're in quicksand, up to them neck in quicksand. Them only have a handout and they say, sir, sir, save me, save me. And he said, all right, you take off your own belt buckle. You swing it out and then grab on to the belt buckle. You hold on to a tree and you pull and you pull and you, you sweat and you struggle, piece of your foot end up in the quicksand, you have to pull out the foot while trying to pull out the person. You spend hours helping and eventually you help the person out. And they're like, oh my gosh, man, you're a godsend. Thank you so much. You're amazing. And they're like, yeah, man, no problem. Where are you going? Which direction are you heading? And when they turn back to look upon him, him dive headfirst back into the quicksand. Two minutes later, him up to him neck with him handout and him saying, help me, help me. Which of us in our right minds are going to throw out the belt to assist this person? Wouldn't our response be to walk away and say, this man is crazy? Yeah or no? Anybody, anybody share my sentiment here?
Do not be weary in well doing.
I don't know what that mean, Brother Smith. Are you coding a passage or are you saying that that is what your response would be?
Just making a suggestion to you, sir, that you could use that buckle again. Maybe you use it in another way after you get them back out.
All right, fair enough. Yeah, yeah, so as David said, you slap him with the belt. You slap him with the belt, but you help him, you help him out, or you held him out, you slap him with the belt. He dives back into the quicksand. Whether we are willing to help the first, second, third time. I'm sure we can all agree that there is an extent or a time period where if he dives in again, he's on his own. I'm sure we can, we can agree that eventually we'd reach, we'd reach a part where tha- that's it, no more. You, 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 you clearly are intent on staying in the quicksand. I know, I, I'm going to ignore your calls, your cries. I'm leaving you by yourself. Sometimes that is how I feel that I behave when I consistently return to the sin that I asked God to save me from or to forgive me of. So I, I, I am in this struggle. I got in there on my own, of my own volition. And I call out to God to save me. I call out for forgiveness, I call out for redemption, I call out for deliverance. And God pulls me out, God brushes me off, God makes me new. And God says, walk, walk in a different direction. And sometimes, not even before God finished talking, I am back in the quicksand. And sometimes, having recognized how ridiculous a situation I have been maintaining for an extended period of time, I become disinclined to call out to God. Because it feels like I am taking God for an idiot. The guilt sometimes makes me feel so undeserving of God's attention that I don't say anything. And I, I either try to get out of the situation on my own or I bask in self pity till I feel like I'm repentant. But the end, the end goal is usually that I don't call out to God. And I think David here brings up this characteristic of God right after establishing that he cries out to God for deliverance to remind us that we should be less concerned of our own state when we cry out and more concerned about God's character. Don't get caught up in you. Don't get caught up in whether this is something you should get from God or not. Because that's not who God is. God is not the type of person who delivers because you deserve. God is not the kind of person that saves because you have earned it. God saves, God delivers, God gives, because that is who he is. And that is who he always will be. So no matter how undeserving or unearning I am, I will never be so undeserving or so unearning to disable God's graciousness. And that, that is the kind of the the reassurance that that provides. The relief that that provides, that even if I walk down and have been walking down the wrong path for so long, even if I have turned a blind eye to the things that I shouldn't be doing knowingly, walking in the path of sin. Deep, deep, deep in the quicksand. If I turn around and if I call out to God and ask him to deliver my soul, what is important is not how far gone I am. What is important is the graciousness of God. And that graciousness says, here, I am giving to you in spite of you being undeserving. Here, you haven't earned it. But because of who I am, because of how I view you, here is my grace. How can we not call on God recognizing this? I'm sure as children, one of the biggest deterrents to calling your parents when you're in trouble is because you know you're gonna get a cussing. So you know if you need to tell mommy or daddy about something where you do or something we need to fix, you broke a vase in another house or play football or something else. You get a, you, you, your peer, your teacher said, your parents need to come in because you're getting troubling in the class. And you know say, boy, you have to tell your parents. You know say, you can't solve the situation without your parents. But you're hesitant to call them, you're hesitant to tell them because you're afraid that you're going to get a cussing. You're afraid of the reaction that you're going to get. And I'm sure a lot of parents um try to, to create an environment where their children feel encouraged to tell them, to worry less about the response and more about sharing it with the parents so that the parent can step in. How much more reassured should we be as children of God? Knowing that no matter how far we go, the response of God, if we have intent to return, is grace. That should be a massive, 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 massive inclination provided to us to call on God. But sadly, we focus on ourselves more often than not and we don't focus on God. And David here is trying to get our attention, get our focus to be on God, be on who God is. So God is gracious. He's not just gracious though, he's righteous. I'm not even going to try to pronounce that, that Hebrew word, but it means just. And the word just means acting or being in conformity with what is upright or good. So not only does God show grace, God is essentially fair. He's upright, he is good. So God is not going to act in a manner that is treating us unfairly in the negative sense. However, he will still give us what we don't deserve. So essentially, what this passage is saying is that God gives us things that we don't deserve. God shows us favor that we have not earned. And on the flip side, he will never treat us unfairly. He will never treat us unfairly. So he will, he will, the, the just, for the most part, speaks to somebody who upholds what is right and what is good. And that usually extends to dealing with wickedness in a particular manner. And God, God's grace overlaps in his justness in that some of the things that we should get because of what we have done has been alleviated by God's grace. And on the flip side, we don't have to worry about God treating us unfairly because he is just. He says, yes, or God is merciful. And this merciful here reinforces how grace works with God's justness. And, oh, hold on, I seen something in the chat, let me see if this is. So Kirk says, um, is there a point where God will leave us in the quicksand? That is a good question, Kirk. And we will get to that, we'll get to that eventually. I don't want to get too deep into that, but that is a good question and we will definitely address it. So the word merciful, rasham, is a verb. So whereas the two words that David uses initially are adjectives and whereas in English, all of these words are adjectives, in Hebrew, the word that is used for merciful is actually a verb. So it speaks to God doing something. the word that is used for merciful is actually a verb. So it speaks to God doing something. So God is gracious, God is mercy, is righteous, but God shows mercy essentially. And the verb, the word that is used, it means to fondle. So fondle means to hold close, to press to oneself. And by implication, it means to love especially compassionately. So if you think again of parents, parents show mercy to their children more often than not because of their love and their compassion. And that usually is expressed through the holding of the child. So the child does something wrong, you, you know that you should punish the child, you know the extent of the punishment should be thus. But because of the compassion that you feel, you can't help but to fondle the child, especially if you have already started the punishment. They start to punish, you see the regret and the, um, the repentance in the, the eyes of the child and you cannot help but to hold them close. The mercy that God is showing, or what David is saying here, that God loves us so much so compassionately that he shows mercy. It is the love that leads to him not treating us as we deserve. So God is gracious where he gives us what we have not earned. God is just where what is upright and good is what God does. But because God loves us so much, because God shows so much compassion towards us, that even when justice is saying that we should suffer, God pulls us close to him. God fondles us, God shows mercy. And it, all of these statements, all of these, these facts, all of these characteristics of God, just, um, the way they interlap with one another. If we truly make use of these avenues, the, the benefits that they have for us in regards to going through our struggles, going through our troubles, um, dealing with guilt and the anxiety that it brings. If we can wholeheartedly accept who God is and the relationship that he wants to have with us, how he wants to treat us even when we fall, how he is inclined to bring us back into the fold, it will truly change how we respond to our struggles. If you notice, this, this particular view of mercy, it, it is highlighted in the very parables of the lost things. Where Jesus reinforces after each thing is found, that there is greater joy when one returns. And the individuals that are portrayed by God in the parable, you see this kind of mercy, you see this kind of compassionate love. In a shepherd leaving a flock to find a sheep, in a lady cleaning her house to find a coin, a coin, and searching diligently, in a father running from afar off to, to embrace his son that left his son that had not yet even completely repented. That is the kind of mercy, the fondling, the, the pulling close to him that God wants to show. And God, all God wants us to do is, is return. He's not asking us to be deserving, he's not asking us to earn it. He's saying, come, call on me, ask me for my deliverance and let me give you access to this mercy. And it's, David, David says it better than I think anybody else could in these psalms. We are out of time. We still have three more verses to go, but we're not, we're not in a hurry. There's a lot of meat to unpack in these passages. As David usually said, we dig in deep and we're going to see if we can get as much as we can out of all of these scriptures. Um, so no need to be worried about the pace, as long, as long as we're learning, we'll go as slowly as, and as in depth as we can. Password? All right, go ahead, Sister Smith.
David the psalmist.
All right, thank you, Sister Smith.
Brother Stephen.
Yes, Sister Smith.
I think the question that Kirk asked is a very, is a great question. Because I was kind of thinking of the passage, a passage in the Bible that says, in all your ways acknowledge him and he'll direct your path. You figure if your relation, if you're not in a right relationship with God, you feel that there'll be no direction and you, you feel that maybe we'll be left in the quicksand.
Oh, okay, all right. Um, I, I didn't, what I got from Kirk's question and maybe I, I misinterpreted it was where you are in a right relationship with God and you, is there a point where being in that relationship, God will eventually leave you in the quicksand? I'm not sure if I misinterpreted that. What I'm getting from you is that you have to be in a relationship with God to get access to these things. Is that correct, Sister Smith?
Yes, that's what I'm asking.
Okay, and yes, that's an excellent thing to, to reinforce. So my apologies if I didn't make that clear to begin with. But all of this, as I said, when David called upon the proper name of God, speaks to the relationship that David is in with God. So if you're not in that relationship to begin with,
Okay.
you don't have access to all of these things that David is speaking about. So excellent thing to, to, to bring up.
Thank you.
Uh, Kirk, can you just confirm that your question is different than Sister Smith? Kirk? Okay, so yeah, man, so Kirk says that he's, I, I got it correctly. So we will address the point of exhausting essentially God's mercy or, or reaching a point where God leaves us in the quicksand. When we, when we reach that point, which based on, on how things are going, I don't think it will be Sunday, but probably on Tuesday. Um, Sister Endala, is your hand up separately or was it for password?
Um, it was for the password, but I see that Sister Smith is so very skillful.
Yes, yes, she.
Yes, very skillful with her hands.
Anyway, let me not keep it any longer. Just a reminder that the password for Sunday is gracious, righteous, merciful. Gracious, righteous, merciful. All right, thank you very much for, for listening, for participating and see you all on Sunday. For class, I hand over to the person doing the closing prayer. Oh, and to quantify Engel's point, you only need to say it one time. I repeat it for emphasis, you don't have to say it twice. All right, thanks.